You get up first and I can move out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom Ward?
Here.
Greg Nelson?
Here.
Tom Jordan?
Here.
Dick Samples?
Here.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Here.
Harry Jennings?
Here.
John Green?
Here.
Tim Mann?
Here.
Richard Evans?
Here.
Tiffany Peters? Here.
Rob Cross?
Here.
Absent any additions or corrections, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Do you have any comments?
Yes, we do. It's your turn. Okay. Great. Uh, thanks guys.
You don't have to go to the podium if you don't feel comfortable. Anywhere, anywhere you'd like.
Alright, uh, thank you guys for allowing us to come here today. Uh, my name is Nicole Meyer and this is David Meyer and we are the 2019 campaign co-chairs for Prairie Lane United Way. And, uh, so, thank you for allowing us to come in here today. I know we've only got five minutes, so I hope you guys are okay with hearing my voice because I'll be the only one talking today. Um, but, we just wanted to share with you what our goals are for Prairie Lane United Way and encourage you guys to support us. So, um, our goal beyond just our monetary goal is, our first goal is to grow our awareness. And, how we are asking to do that is by coming here today and talking to you guys at all Prairie Lane United Way, so thank you for that. Uh, but also we invite you guys to look inside the pamphlets that as we hand us out, there's a surprisingly good picture on the front, but we're gonna ask you guys to go see inside because that's where it talks about the agencies that we serve and the different programs that they host as well. And so through that, you can actually learn about what's going on in the community and where the need is. And so, once you start to kinda grow your awareness about the need in the community, it can hopefully also grow your compassion, which is our second goal. So as you start to learn about what your neighbors' needs are, what they might be going through, hopefully your heart starts to maybe grow a little larger, kinda like The Grinch at the end, of course. And, um, that kind of encourages you to also grow our community. So the more that we're able to assist each other, encourage each other, especially in those rough patches, is where we can have that lasting impact and really grow our community, which is our third goal. Um, but of course, with any type of organization such as this, we do have a monetary goal. And our monetary goal this year is $460,000, which to us is no small amount of money. So we really invite you guys to grow united with us, um, and actually help us reach that goal. One thing that Prairie Lane United Way is really good at is actually taking $1 and turning it into three. How, you ask?
I'm actually really proud of what you've done with the different campaigns we've done.
I always wait for someone, but it never happens. Oh, thank you. So, how they're able to do that is, many of our organizations and agencies that we help support, they apply for additional state grants or even federal funding or even private grants. And many times, in order to receive that additional funding, they have to meet their own fundraising goal as well. So, many times, Prairie Lane United Way during our allocation panels will look towards that, which if you are a donor, you are invited to actually become a part of our allocation panels. It's on the form, it's at the top in the little box, highly suggested, that's what's grown our passion about it. But during the allocation panels, we're actually looking to see where we can double, triple, and even quadruple the money that we've raised. Um, so, just for an example, in 2017 through 2018, we were able to go, uh, we were able to bring an additional $1.3 million into our community, which is a huge sum in my mind. So, uh, just kinda know that generally every $1 that you're gonna donate, we actually will turn that into $3, which can add up super fast. Um, also, just so you guys know, 100% of the donations that we receive go directly to the agencies. So, the pretty pamphlets that you guys see and things like that, that's actually not um, something that comes from donors such as yourself. So 100% of the donations you make to United Way go directly to those agencies that we're serving. And Prairie Lane United Way actually serves four counties. We serve Morgan, Scott, Cass, and Greene County.
Northern Greene.
Northern Greene County specifically. So, did I forget anything?
I think you nailed it, and...
Time goal?
Time goal.
Seven oh five.
We got time to spare.
Okay, since I have time to spare, uh, we actually do, go ahead, I'll let you talk.
No, so the one thing that we like to share wherever we go, and we did a lot of different company campaigns and school campaigns, we try to take a picture no matter where we go, so therefore to kinda show the support that our schools, our companies, that our local businesses are actually contributing to United Way. So we, that's one thing she does on Facebook and post it, and so if it's okay with you, we're gonna take a quick picture.
Yeah.
Let's see, I can...
Oh, I need to grab one too.
Yeah, that's her.
And then while we're getting prepared for that, wanna talk about our...
We have a couple events that we talked about. Um, we do a, we have a small initiative for small businesses united, uh, to kinda get uh, local business, small local businesses, uh, come be a part of United Way and kinda contribute to our goal. Uh, so on the 14th, Homegirls, we're gonna be offering our services and kind of, um, folding clothes, kinda also some of their costs and some of their proceeds for that day are actually going towards our campaign. Uh, we also have a fundraiser coming up on February 8th called Prices Right, or Prices United. It's gonna be like a dinner theater Prices Right show, it's gonna be really exciting, that'd be, uh, had planned. Uh, we haven't done official releases on that, but kinda been sharing it as we kinda been going, so.
Watch out for her, catch it. Come on now.
Yeah, she's, uh, going here. So, and then I think her time's up, so.
Yeah. Alright.
We're just gonna do kind of a selfie thing and, uh, oh, man, just took a picture of the floor.
You're good at selfies, dude.
Okay, well, that's gonna be, make it a little bit easier.
A little further back. A little, a little further back. A little further. I think that will...
Help, help.
Just by her head, we got it.
Alright. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
No.
We didn't have cookies, but we had pets, so.
Alright.
Awesome.
There you go.
Hey, I have one. I want another one.
Okay, uh, through the regular session...
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much. For Thursday, November 7th, 7:00 PM, any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Uh, second, please.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Any response?
No.
Through the treasures report for October 2019, motion to approve the treasures report.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All opposed, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. November 2019 payables, general fund checks, $325,182.58. Total TIF checks, $110,569.88. Total MFT checks, $60,000. Total tourism checks, $14,019.10. Water sewer revenue checks, refunds, $250. Total refund checks, uh, total, sorry, total refund checks this month, $380. Manual checks in November 2019, $112,618.98. Total November payables, $437,000, eight hun- $437,801.56. Motion to approve the November 2019 payables.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 One thing I would like to point out and correct me if I'm wrong, but you paid an additional $95,000...
Additional $30,000.
Thirty, I'm sorry, additional 35, 30?
Thirty.
30,000.
So $95,000 went to the rest of the...
Okay.
That's for the loan for the school.
We're, we're paying in advance for that.
You're not paying in advance.
I, I know, I, I said that wrong. We're paying...
Right.
On account, so, but that's a good deal to do.
Yep.
South Jacksonville Fire Department community benefit is having their cookie walk Saturday, December 14th. It's open at 7:00 AM till they're sold out.
That's correct.
Drop off cookies on Friday the 13th.
That's correct.
Friday the 13th. And are they still looking, bless you, are they still looking for help for that day too, or?
Except for you might want to build that cookies by the day.
What about help for the day of, they're still looking for the day of?
Well, we're pretty safe. But looking for cookies.
Yep.
Our assistant fire chief, David Bye, the election results, they were unanimous, correct?
Correct.
So, I'd like to appoint David Bye, our fire chief. I forget what the term is, do you remember? It's two years, isn't it?
This'll be a two-year, yeah.
Two-year, yes. Because we offset those, so the first one for his spot was one year, and then from now on out they're all two years, but the three positions are offset. So we'd like to appoint him the assistant fire chief for a two-year term, a motion to accept that.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Do a roll call.
Paul Stewart?
Second.
Yeah.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Alright. We had a total of five building permits, total estimated cost, $33,560. Total permit fees, $290. Christmas tree pickup, do you have a date for that yet, John?
We did January 6th.
The week of January 6th.
One question on that, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but are you still picking them up leaves?
No, that was over in November.
Okay.
But now, there's a few stragglers out there we will get because if we don't, they'll sit there all winter, they'll be busted open, they'll be our problem.
Okay, but Thanksgiving was on Thursday this year, so.
Right, but we, still, we've, we've already been one round since, we've got a few to pick up and we are, we're not, we're telling by we're done.
Yeah, that's right.
But if we count on some that are out there, we're getting them just for the purpose of not having that later.
Okay, no problem.
With the trees, no ornaments or decorations or anything on the trees, right?
Yeah.
And no fake trees unfortunately, because I'd like to get rid of mine.
Just don't want the presidency satisfied.
We have a couple upcoming public hearings on the 12th. 6:30 we'll be discussing wa- a temporary water rate, and I know we've discussed, uh, two different water rates, but for this one, I'd like to keep it simple and just do the temporary water rate for the bill adjustment. And then following that, same evening at 7 o'clock, we'll be discussing the recreational marijuana sales. So hopefully we get some people to attend those too, get some public input on those. Committee meetings, I do believe we already scheduled one for this month, but it was the 19th, and I know I have a Christmas program and I think a cou- a couple other people can't make that date, so I wonder if we wanna reschedule that.
Can we put it on the 18th?
I'm good with that.
Wednesday? Yeah. One of the reasons why I'm, I'm very close to having the conification done, and I'd like to have a vote on that thing or look at it or discuss it or something, so we can get the thing turned in by the first of the year, so.
We said what time?
What time are we doing that?
Uh, we don't know.
Whatever time, 6:30.
6:30.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
And that would be on the 18th. What's, okay, the other one's on the 12th.
The 12th is the, uh, the public hearings, and those should be fairly short, because...
So this is the one that's gonna be on the 19th?
Yes.
Alright. And I'll get all this information to you and the attorney next week.
Sounds good for me.
Because we're going to have to pass a, an ordinance consolidating these or whatever.
Right, amending or clarifying.
Yeah, amending.
I just wanted my white out to work.
Alright. And for liquor license, I know we've had a lot of discussion on a recent application for a liquor license, so with our attorney here, I'd just like to go ahead and get a little bit of clarification on our current ordinance. I know we have it on the agenda tonight to update that ordinance.
So based on my, my presence at, and, but understanding of discussions between the trustees and the village president at committee meetings and, uh, discussion Dick and Harry and I had, there does seem to be, clearly seems to be, some conflict or confusion between the B1 zoning ordinance and the liquor license ordinance, and that's what you'll be voting on later, uh, later on in the meeting. The goal was to clarify what the board and the village president believed the intention of the liquor license ordinance was and the B1 ordinance was, and reconcile them. And that's what's, that's what's up tonight, about whether, uh, B1 ordinance, B1 zoning automatically includes a liquor license or does it need a special use. So that, that's where this came from. Okay.
Any questions for Rob on that issue, or? Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote, this isn't an action item, what I'm gonna do is this is be a consensus. So I'm gonna read this here, so, and just answer a yes or a no basically for this consensus vote. After hearing our legal counsel's assessment of the current B1 zoning ordinance, is your wish to rec- retroactively enforce tonight's B1 zoning update on the otherwise valid liquor license application from November 2019? Is that clear?
No.
No.
Explanational.
Tonight's B1 zoning update that we're doing?
Yes.
Do you wanna apply that zoning, this new ordinance, to, for the November application?
Yes.
Well, let's, we do that?
I'm sorry, yeah, okay. I understand.
So, I'll have Megan, okay, so we'll have Megan do a roll call vote, and then...
Hold on. Um, this is number seven.
And again, it's not, it's not an action item, it's a consensus vote from, basically my more clear understanding, so that we were all on the same page.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Okay. Personnel, uh, committee reports, we didn't have anything for personnel reports, I don't think we did. Uh, funding in public facilities?
Welcome.
Jason?
No, greatest tours?
Hello.
No? Finance?
Uh, we did have a short meeting and the, the date escaped me, but it was a couple weeks ago for the, um, TIF financing, and we met with a nice lady and all that, and she gave us, y'all should have copies of this.
Yes.
And it's just a summary of, uh, of the year 2018 and fiscal year 2018, 2019, and it basically shows they were in pretty good shape.
Uh, to add to that, Dick brought up with her while we were there, um, and we'd go over this more in the committee meeting, but a TIF district for residential.
I, I asked her about the potential of doing a TIF district for residential use only, and we do have some vacant land, basically it's located across from the fire department that could be used for development, or there's other land out here that could be used for development, but if, if you know any developers, contractors, or whatever would be interested in this, she talked very, she being the lady from the...
The TIF advisor.
TIF advisor, she talked very favorable that we could do this, and it would be set up on the same premises, I think it's 22 years, isn't it?
23.
23.
And she, she stressed that you want them bordering, that works out better if they border your current TIF district.
So, that's, that's down the road, but again, that's something that we could do very easily.
Um, but yeah, that's something that'd be very easy, so we'll get some maps together and we'll just kinda hash that out at a later date then. Uh, parks and tourism? I don't think we've had anything for parks.
Eric, I interrupted.
Well, sorry, yes.
The, the TIF, uh, map has been updated on our website, if anybody wants to look at it.
Yeah, the website looks wonderful, I mean, a lot of people have reached out and said they really like it, it's a lot more user friendly, that's for sure. And it'll be nice once we get those ordinances up on there too, so, they'll finally be online.
Also, our voting precincts are, uh, more clearly identified.
Yeah, those, uh, that's a good thing and a not-so-good thing, because it used to be people voted in those voting precincts, and now everybody votes at the firehouse. Um, I know that can cause a little confusion, we still have voting precincts, but, because I know when I first voted in South Jacksonville, I voted here, and we still have people come here.
They don't vote at Labor Drive?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, just two, two voting places.
Yeah, just two. A quarter of town, they vote at Labor Drive, and then everybody else votes at the firehouse.
Right.
Um, but you still have the committee members and whatnot, so, so we need to make sure that there's something that stresses us too. Public protection?
The only thing I have to mention that pertains to the fire department and the ladder truck is still out of service, it's at Center State, formerly Byers, uh, having a new radiator installed, and Rich says it should be, uh, back in service by the middle next week.
Might be anything more than what they thought of it.
Not so far, he did call and say that it was plugged. Plugged out pretty bad. It's been a, it was a fruit field. They typically, uh, put a ride from a emergency vehicle, so, and it's a common problem, this company said they'll do a sprinkled fire trucks and last few months.
That's the extra cost, I think, nothing's sporadically changed, though.
No, I do know the radiator itself is $4,100, um, that's what the Byers put.
Well, we already talked about that. It is what it is, guys, so.
I know you've got something.
I know. Outside of, really, we're not, I don't, don't need to address me if I talk about it, so I have to answer any questions if there is any, but...
Nope, there's none.
I guess it worked, didn't it?
Alright.
I'd actually do have, just one quick question.
Sure.
Um, what was the, uh, possession of a controlled substance that was with that, um, arrest? Or, I guess the substance, I guess.
Methamphetamine.
Okay.
So our two right now, we, everybody I think is getting a lot of marijuana, y'all have, y'all, we're not gonna change that for us, you know, the people who smoke marijuana now probably aren't gonna be, because they're 21. Uh, methamphetamine and marijuana are two things.
Okay.
Problem, that's the most problem, but we have, uh, six or seven delivery motor vehicles in this last month, that's what they're doing, breaking in, trying to get change, put enough change together to get a little bit of, uh, or...
Just curious.
Any arrests made on those car break-ins? No?
Uh, two suspects, but no, it was timeless, old vehicle was recovered, um, about four hours later, and the same day or the same night that that happened, so you had a motor vehicle, it's all part of, wonder if they have a pretty good idea of it.
Okay, I had a late, a neighbor alert me that it was in my backyard, I wasn't aware of that. Surprise.
Okay, on to our action items, we have the tax levy ordinance for the general fund, a motion to approve that tax levy.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, and the tax levy ordinance for road district number 15, a motion to approve that ordinance?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, and the tax levy ordinance for road district number 15, a motion to approve that ordinance?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
And the ordinance amending the B1 zoning update, the, uh, that for the liquor license restriction, a motion to approve that ordinance?
So moved.
A second?
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Our gaming license ordinance update will allow up to six machines for everything except for truck stops, they'll go to up to 10 machines, a motion to approve that.
Little discussion, now that's a state, approved, right?
Yes, that's, it'll match, it'll match the state statute, yes.
Yeah, yeah, they're, I mean, they're, pretty much, got you.
Motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
Oh.
A second?
Second. Sorry.
Tom Jordan?
Copy, I'm going.
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
That's a big one.
Motion to approve a special use permit for a salon, it, forgive me, what's the address?
Oh, yeah, that's...
I thought you might have the plan.
1919A.
Yeah, sorry, 1980, southeast?
1919A.
1919A southeast.
So moved.
Right here. Southeast 1919A.
Well...
Move down there.
Second?
Who? Sorry.
Paul.
Tom did, I think.
Oh, Tom did.
Jason, second.
Dick Samples?
Yes. Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
A motion to approve the, uh, contract for the farmland. Motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second?
Roll call, please.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yeah.
Todd Ward?
Jacksonville Promise Donation, uh, Rob and I did talk briefly, and he does not think, right? He does not think that that would qualify for a tourism donation, so, didn't know if he still wanted to go forward with that, and I went ahead and put it on there just in case we did.
Yeah, I'm, um, I think Ben, from the radio station, had given Dr. Sheaf my number, so he called, we're kind of playing phone tags, so maybe what I was suggesting we could look at for next year, because we'd have a new budget year, and, so, whatever you guys are thinking for this year. Because that was where I was thinking, maybe we could find some kind of partnership, or, um, but ask Jacksonville Promise if they would possibly include South Jacksonville in their title, their name, if we would donate, in a...
Refresh our memory here, but wasn't it twenty-five hundred?
They were...
That's just what Jacksonville...
That's what the city gave her.
I think that's kind of the number we were talking about, twenty-five hundred, but I was suggesting at a future date possibly increase that, and I think Sheaf had brought up a good point, that with this current budget, we'd ask you guys to cut back on some things, so that's a valid point, but something I think we should think of for the next budget year, and...
So do you want to just push it to the table, this, and?
Oh, I mean, I don't know that we would give more than twenty-five hundred this year, whatever you guys are thinking.
Tiffany, do you remember, um, off the top of your head, because I don't, how much we, um, budgeted for, like, general donation?
I want to say five hundred, because I think that was the amount that...
I think we increased it, because I, I know I'd mentioned in case we had something else. I think it was like fifteen hundred. Because I know we, I know we budgeted for the prom, but I think we added a little bit more.
I don't know. I think we talked about it, but I don't know if we did.
Because it was like five grand. I know we cut it way down.
It was like two years ago, we cut it down a lot. That's why I can't remember.
I guess, I mean, I don't want to wait, because we could talk about increasing or a partnership next year.
Well, I, I...
But still, I think we need to build it now.
Uh, one thousand.
One thousand.
Okay, and we did five hundred, or, and five hundred, that's post-prom?
If that's what you choose.
Okay.
But that's what you...
Well, that's the idea.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that...
A thousand'd be plenty.
That we should keep, and just have it be five hundred, because we budgeted for it.
Keeping our budget.
As a donation thing, um, I, I don't think going over that would be a good example. Or, or, you know, spending more, we budgeted.
So is that your motion to donate five hundred?
I was hoping to maybe see if anybody else was like, oh, yeah, that's a good idea, or...
I'll second that.
That makes sense.
It was a good idea, I guess.
I mean, I would like it to be more, but that's a good point. We budgeted that amount.
Five, five hundred, I believe.
Yeah.
Well, and if you're a contact, we'll just tell them that next year, we'll put it in the budget that...
Alright.
Increase it, and then that, if they'll make their change on whatever you're talking about for South Jacksonville, I think we'll...
We would definitely look at increasing. Have we donated to them before?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so this is just the first donation, and we can go from there.
Alright. So Greg, you motioned to do five hundred, and you seconded?
Yes.
Alright, so we are on...
Sounds good. Look at you being all...
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
That makes sense.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
I'm not so sure. Paul, you said the first, first year for this.
Jason Hill?
Absolutely.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Alright, Board of Trustees, schedule for two thousand twenty, it will be every Thursday, Thursday, I'm sorry, first Thursday of every month. There's no anomalies there, so a motion to approve that? Second?
Second.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Plans Commission Zoning Board of Appeals schedule is the second Thursday of every month. Pending business, motion to approve that schedule?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Or Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Two thousand twenty holiday observance schedule. We have New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Junior Day, uh, President's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, day after Thanksgiving, and Christmas Day. Motion to approve that holiday schedule?
So moved.
Second?
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
All business?
One eye. I had a long discussion with the attorney for, uh, the grain company out here over the billboard.
Yep.
And that billboard, our, their agreement was with another company, and that company is sold out to Lamar. And Lamar basically didn't want to honor our use of that billboard till Mr. Webster informed them that it was going to be that way, or they could remove their billboard. So, and I don't think they're going to want to remove the billboard, so. The, you know, I've said this before, there are certain things he didn't want. He didn't want any pornographic material, he didn't want anything to do with any liquor, he didn't want anything to do with any other grain company, and that is not a restriction on us, but it is a restriction on that company in order to leave that billboard there, and we...
On which company?
On Lamar, which is now. It was on the original one, but it's on Lamar now, and they're going back and forth there a little bit, so, I, did we have any problem getting the current billboard signed up? There wasn't any discussion, or, you know, wanting us to pay for something other than what we normally would pay?
Other than just the signage, no?
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Because they were, they were going to...
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same rep from the old company, so.
Okay.
I don't know whether you heard me tell Harry, but the, uh, season's greeting sign is up out there.
Yeah, yeah, it's up.
The rest of you knew that, yeah.
I haven't seen it yet, I just...
With the mad logo.
Been dark when I leave, and dark when I come back.
I've been avoiding you out there with that construction, so.
Does it have the logo?
Has a mad logo in the upper right-hand corner, yeah.
So, but we, there is nothing in writing other than a gentleman's agreement that they're going to let us use it, so they could call us in the morning, said, we're gonna, we're gonna take this away, but they have no desire to at this present time, according to Mr. Webster, the attorney for Mark, so that's what we're at.
So, I, I still think, though, we should have an ordinance on this usage, don't you think so?
I don't think it would hurt anything.
Yeah, I mean, restricting ourselves to match those restrictions, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I mean...
Well, I mean, we say what for, to have it up there, and then they just want to take it down, I mean, you know.
I mean, I'm not even concerned about that part, if they could, if, if, it's their sign, and they could take that away from us, then that's a separate issue. I'm just talking about what we put up. If there's, if there's telling the sign company that, hey, we don't want liquor, then, then we should pass an ordinance saying that it restricts that sign to not have liquor, not have another company.
As long as, while it is in our control.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, something like that.
Is there anything wrong with this, Rob?
I don't know. Sounds like a smart idea.
Right, that's what we've been hoping to do, because we have turned down, since I've been on the board, we've turned down the United Way for using that billboard, and I didn't agree with that, because that's no different than any other...
It had been used for that in the past.
Right, and so that's why I would like to see an ordinance, because I feel like it shouldn't be up to us to pick and choose who goes up there, it should be the ordinance's state, you know, what it should be, and so there's not a personal thought in there. And there was some advertisement or something at the bottom of the United Way, so we just poo-pooed that, where the United Way, you heard tonight, the money they raise for four communities, you know, four counties, and I don't think we should have that much power over what goes up on that billboard.
Well, my thought was, is we could even put in there, like, this gets first priority and second priority.
And that would be something we could talk through, and, but, you know, five oh-one C-threes, those ki- those kind of, of things, um, should go first, I think. I don't know, that's what we can talk about, but that way it doesn't become Dick's got an idea of what he wants up there, and I know what I want up there, it just, we've all come to an agreement.
It goes by the ordinance.
Absolutely, yeah. Is that something you can do for us, Rob?
Absolutely. Come up with your list.
Alright, new business? Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.